We're recording.
We're recording?
Yep.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Leaders?
Present.
Dietrich?
Present.
Larson?
Present.
Bingham?
Present.
Plagman?
Present.
And Weedy?
Present.
I'm pretty sure Brett Larson is absent tonight.
Okay, I guess we'll stand for the pledge.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Any questions, corrections?
I would hope they'd be accepted as soon as possible.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I abstain. I'm in here.
Oh, okay. Did you get that Pam?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, um, I guess next we're move on to case number sub 2019-05.
Yep, you want to read the statement for the open?
I'm gonna go ahead and read the statement first. Okay. Public hearings will be conducted pursuant to the commission's rules of procedure. We will first hear the report of the planning director on the detailed information and observations regarding the request before the commission, if not done so in written form prior to the hearing. Next, we will take the testimony of the applicants and his or her witness. Upon completion of the applicant's testimony, I will call upon members of the audience wishing to be heard concerning the request. Persons in favor of the request shall be heard first, followed by those opposed to it. At any time during the presentation of testimony, the members of the commission may interrupt to ask questions or to make comments on what has been said. Upon completion of all testimony, the applicants will be allowed to make a closing statement to the commission. Upon completion of the applicant's closing statement, I will entertain a motion from the commission to close the public hearing on the request. The commission reserves the right to ask questions of any member of the audience. However, we will not hear any unsolicited statements unless the public hearing is first reopened. Each speaker addressing the commission shall step forward to the podium and state their name and address before proceeding with their testimony or evidence. This commission shall not be bound by strict rules of evidence, but does reserve the right to exclude evidence or testimony that it may deem to be irrelevant, immaterial, incompetent, or unduly repetitious. As the chairman, I will rule on all questions relating to the admissibility of evidence, which may be overruled by the majority of the commission. Continuances may be granted by the commission in case for good cause shown to any interested party who has entered their appearance. The commission may request a continuance of a hearing for the purpose of giving further notice, taking further evidence, gathering further information, touring the proposed site, or for such other reasons as the commission may find sufficient. In such case, we shall state the specific reason for the continuance and set a date, time, and place when the matter will be continued. All official actions of this commission will be made at a public meeting by motion made, second, and a polling of the members. If conditions are imposed, such conditions shall be included in the motion or amended thereto. Our final decision will be prepared in writing and will be part of the public record of this commission. Okay, now we'll move on to case sub 2019-05.
I move we go into a public hearing first. Sub dash 209-05.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
No, second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright. And then first off, we will ask the applicant to come forward. I'm fine if you sit there.
I won't say it. I'll stand.
Or stand, that's fine. Please state your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Guyer with Snyder and Associates, 1751 Madison Avenue. Our firm is actually representing the Merits, who are here, Brian and Tiffany are the property owners. And their extended family are here as well. Opposing the subdivision, property is located in northwest corner of 238th Street and Highway 6, Zone A4, Les Hills District. The Merits recently acquired this property with the intention of constructing their own residence on a portion of Lot 1 by this existing building. Lot 2 has an existing house on it, and that will remain per the plat, and then potential for another residential lot, a lot 3. The reason for the strip or the gap left between lots 2 and 3 is to allow access to the rear part of the property, which is currently farmed and will probably be farmed for some time going into the future. The subdivision is proposed to be served by septic and individual wells. We have a statement that we've submitted to planning staff that the ground is suitable for septic and wells. We did get comments back from staff and we've made those changes. It's very straightforward. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, or the owners could as well.
Okay, so did you say, so Lot 1 would be for a house also?
Yes.
Okay, so all three for residential property?
Residential, that's the intent.
Okay.
Again, the current land use is agriculture and that will stay that way for some time, but for a portion of it anyway. It's treed and there's a low lying area back here that has some drainage coming through it. So some of this wouldn't be developed. The farm ground is basically right in this portion. Can't see it real well from my aerial, but to zoom out just a little bit, again, I'm sure you're all familiar with where this is at. Basically across on the north side of Bent Tree Golf Course, West Fair.
Right.
Just over here, up the hill.
Yep.
Back to the west. It's great with having good access off of Highway 6, paved all the way up to the interstate. I think there may be some nice larger state type lots.
Okay. Any other question for Mike? Alright, thank you Mike.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Applicant, family member, anybody? Okay. Anybody that'd like to speak against?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not against, but I do have a few comments. I represent the airport and neighbors of the facility. Is that okay?
You want to come on up and state your name, please?
Sure.
Name and address, appreciate that.
Oh, yes?
Well, see, I didn't realize you were here.
Okay, so you're gonna wait for...
You're scaring us, though.
Well, I apologize on that. I don't have the copy of your agenda, so.
Oh.
I'll send back what I wanted.
This one, yeah, this one's for the Merits, which is up across from West Fair.
You're probably looking at the coder.
That's Michael, right?
Yes.
I apologize for the disruption.
No worries, thank you.
Sounds like a nice project.
I just have a question. On the, on Lot 1, the existing shed that goes off as part of the easement that, is there any issue with that?
And I thought, Pam, if you want to answer?
So from that, from the line, because it does that directly about 238th Street, the setback is reduced, so it will cause any...
And we'll correct that or change that when we get to final plat. The setback would actually be up here off of 238. As opposed to, we just projected the line through.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, Matt, you want to, what's the staff's recommendation?
Our recommendation would be to approve the preliminary plat. It falls in line with the changes that the planning commission had recommended through the board of supervisors about being able to allow a little bit greater density off of the official by two minutes road. And it should be a good addition for some housing in an area that is kind of empty for lots right now.
I think it meets all the minimum requirements and they've done their work as far as the septic and the well are approved in, so I would so move it we approve.
Anyway, we get a closed public hearing first.
Sorry.
You want to move that?
I'll move that.
Okay. We have a motion to close public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright. Now we can have further discussion and for a motion to approve or deny.
I move we approve the request under per case sub dash 2019-05 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Good job. Now, moves on to the board of supervisors, actually, Michael.
It's October 8th meeting, I believe.
I think.
Do we talk about? You can, you don't have to, and Mike will represent you. I'll send him. Okay.
Harders is going to postpone.
Postpone theirs. Yep, I had heard that, so. Okay, yeah, just so everybody knows, the next one's sub 2019-06 that has been probably moved to our next meeting, I guess.
Right, they're gonna ask for a variance request along with it.
Okay. Okay, very good. So then we'll move on. I don't have to read the statement again, do I?
Nope.
Okay, good.
Just once.
Once is enough. Alright, so then, do we have a motion for public hearing for case number sub 2019-07?
I move that we hold a public hearing for sub dash 2019-06.
No, we're moving on to seven.
Seven.
Yep. Six was harder, so. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. And the applicant on this one, is that you again, Mike? It's the Mike show today.
Chairman, member of the commission against Mike Guyer with Snyder and Associates, 1751 Madison Avenue, representing Colder Farms, who we have Rip Colder, property owner, representative this evening. Talk a little bit about the property. This is located just directly east of the Councils Airport and does about the airport property. It's located both on the north, north of this way, this house, both on the north and south side of McPherson. The dead end from McPherson to the airport is right over here. The property is currently zoned R3, urban transitional property. So this proposed development is in line with current zoning. The subdivision is proposed as 10 lots, with four lots being south of McPherson and six lots to the north. If you notice, the two furthest north lots are flag shaped lots, so they each have a strip or access down to McPherson. All of the proposed access locations on common property lines are proposed to be shared access so that they won't have all individual lots. And again, how those might develop is going to depend on how the lots sell. For instance, somebody, someone may want to buy two lots and have a home on it, things like that. But again, that would allow for less lots in each one having its own. Similar to what's happened east of here, along with person, everybody has shared lots on most subdivisions. The water line, there's a 16 inch water line that goes through and serves Bent Tree. And we've had discussions with Councils Water Works and they're willing to supply water. Everything would be on the septic, again, very similar to Bent Tree and how that operates. I think that, Pam, explains a lot and I don't want to take anything away from Andy and Shugel and I talked anyhow, but we have had discussions with Councils Airport Authority and some concerns with the proximity to the airport, number one, and if there would be any effects to any of the aviation activities around the airport. And speaking with the property owner, we have talked about putting in the covenants. As a minimum, a notice to any owners that this development is within the environment of an active general aviation airport, so you're gonna have planes flying overhead and things like that. So at least make them aware that this is gonna be within that zone. The other question was if there's any effect on, through the FAA or on airport operations. So, a couple of things on that. The division of land is not something that would be regulated by the FAA. So this division, the FAA starts getting concerned when you come off the ground. So in looking at the zoning ordinance, and this is through the county zoning ordinance for the airport protection zone, this property falls within the horizontal surface. The horizontal surface, and this might show it a little bit better. There's a lot of lines on here, so bear with me. This is the longest runway at the airport, runway 1836. And the property is showing in red over here, so it's horizontal to the airport. There are some different surfaces that project on the approach and departure ends of the different runways, but none of those impact this area. So it's the horizontal surface. The horizontal surface is described as going 10,000 feet on the street, it's almost two miles, so that, here's a blot. I mean, the horizontal surface includes most of Bent Tree and everything else to the east and to the west for that matter. And that horizontal surface is defined as being 150 feet above the airport elevation. So the airport elevation is at 1,250 feet above mean sea level. So the horizontal surface, 150 feet above that, puts that at 1,400 feet above mean sea level. The highest elevation on the existing property is 1,240, so it's basically 110 feet below that surface, or excuse me, 160 feet below that surface. So the highest point on this property, ground surface, is actually 10 feet lower than the airport elevation. And the horizontal surface goes 150 feet above that, that's the protection area. And in talking with Mr. Colder, we've agreed as well that in the covenants, we could put restrictions, height restrictions as to, and back to mean sea level datum. And we're talking about maybe 40 feet above ground level, something like that, to limit any structure heights. Typical house, even a two story, is going to be 30 feet tall, but, you know, there's old radial antennas, or somebody mentioned, oh, somebody wants to put up a individual wind turbine or something like that that could go higher than the house. We're going to put those restrictions within the covenants to file with the plat to limit that so that it does not penetrate, won't even get close to that horizontal surface, if that makes sense.
Is, is the height stuff, isn't that already in the zoning for that though?
We do have a height stuff, the height regulations within the zoning ordinance, and we also have the airport hazard items within the zoning ordinance, which would probably take a lot of that into consideration. I mean, they could add it to their covenants. It would just, sometimes, those... You know, we've had, we have one developer who tries to, who likes to try to call us up and say, you know, that's not within our covenants, we need you to do something because you're granted a permit to it. We don't regulate covenants.
Right.
And so, I mean, they can kind of do whatever they do, it's just then it's up to them to either develop the homeowners association and/or the developer to constantly then monitor those covenants piece of it, so.
Seems like it'd be a little bit of doubling up, but, I mean, if that's what it...
Well, I mean, we're here to, you know, if there's anything that we can help to mitigate issues and concerns that the airport might have, property owners willing to do that to bring the development forward. Mr. Colder and his family have had this property for over 50 years. Actually, a portion of it was taken previously as part of the airport expansion, so it's getting to the point, you know, from formability standpoint, yeah, it's still farmable and it'll probably continue that until houses are built, but it's getting pretty squeezed here, so, again, it fits the zoning. Urban transitional zone and it's consistent with even bigger lots than what are on Bent Tree. So again, served by municipal water, paved road. I think it's a nice little development. I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add, Rick, or have to address the commission with your...
Can we wait just a second? Let's finish up. If anybody's got a question for Mike?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Okay.
Yes.
Sometimes homeowners fly drones. How is that affecting?
There's a whole nother set of regulations that govern how far, how close you can be to airports, and that's through the FAA with their, with drones. There are local jurisdictions that are adopting those ordinance as well, but, I mean, they get pretty, everybody gets pretty touchy, you start flying a drone around the airport.
If you raise your drone off the ground, it's gonna tell you that you shouldn't be raising your drone off the ground. I've been, I've been in those spots. And land it quickly.
Alright, just asking.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? Alright. Thank you, Mike. Okay, those are, still the applicant, if you want to state your name and address, please?
Rip Coder is my name, C-O-D-E-R, 5621 North 141st Circle in Omaha, across the river. Just very briefly to the board, my dad bought this ground well over 50 years ago. I was a kid when he bought it, and I'm well past being a kid. I am, I am sad he's not here today. He always figured Councils was gonna come, head east with his bulldozer and get over the top of that ground and maybe part of town. And he could be delighted today to see us coming up to the west instead. We are here to be cooperative, good neighbors, whatever it takes to make everybody good and people that end up living there as homes, for them to be suitable and happy. We are all for all of it. I thank you for your consideration, as a matter.
Great, thanks. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Coder? Okay, thank you, sir. Alright. Anybody else in favor? Okay, anybody opposed?
Is there another category?
There's not another category. We can put you in the, we'll put you right between opposed and in favor. How about that?
Differ.
Differ. We'll put you in the differ zone.
My name is Andy Viller. I'm the executive director for the Councils Airport Authority. I address residents 213 Forest Glen Drive here in Councils. I'm not here to speak in favor or against the project, although Mike has kept me apprised and I'm very comfortable with everything that he said, and particularly because Snyder and Associates was an active participant in the development of the airport. So if you even look at his airport layout plans, it's gonna have their stamp on it. So they know all about airports, so we're in good shape there. So my main objective today, a little bit of duplication, but not much, it's the responsibility of the airport, it's what we're called airport sponsors in the eyes of the FAA, to advocate for our operations. And the county in relation, in association with the city, does have a tall structures ordinance, which is very key. The main challenge is the enforcement of that. And Mike is right, our main concern is on the direct approach to the runways or departure points. This property is off to the side. So from that standpoint, that would not appear to be a problem. The, we've actually been told by the FAA planners that we need to be looking out five or 10 miles and may be made aware of projects of size, particularly with the advent of wind generators and cell phone towers. And if you add to that the terrain, you can go quite a ways from the airport and find a little higher spot. And so we do have to be careful of that. We sign grant assurances, there's 36 of them every time we receive dollars, and we receive millions of dollars from the FAA, particularly over the years. If, and in that, we are to maintain the integrity of the airspace. Just in the last year or so, there's been a conflict in Carroll, Iowa, where a farmer put up an elevator leg adjacent to the airport after being given a permit by the county, and it went to the Iowa Supreme Court, and he's been ordered to take it down. And Mike knows and has assured me that any construction or the covenants will indicate that there's a process where you apply to the FAA, and I shouldn't use the word apply, but you advise the building project. We just went through this. I believe you approved a variance to a shed in the Edgewood addition to go about three feet above what you normally would allow. And that did require that the FAA be informed, they performed the airspace assessment, and it came back positive. One thing, and I'll share this for future purposes, not so much for this project, we have to be cautious that we read the whole finding, because they may come back as no hazard, which is what everybody wants to hear. The problem, and they did that in Carroll, Iowa, the problem is, is that they'll just raise the airport minimums so the aircraft cannot come in as low to land in those cases, and that diminishes the value of the airport. So it isn't just that you get a statement of no hazard, it's what they're gonna do to achieve that, and that's what we really have to watch for. So in closing, the things that, as an advocate for the airport, the things that I want to make sure get taken into consideration, it sounds to me like they will through covenants and so forth, are the tall structures ordinance, and it shouldn't be an issue in this location for this type of construction. That the FAA obstruction and airspace assessment occurs, and, and once the property is sold, I don't know how that's monitored, but the covenants may be the way to do that. Not all county residents are aware of the tall structures ordinance in the process, and it's kind of complicated. McPherson access remains important to us. We have what we call Gate 8 on McPherson. This is an area where I would say that this project will help us. That is an out of sight location for us. We had an incident one year ago this month where somebody drove right through the gate, pulled it off the hinges and left it behind, and we don't know that until we go look and inspect the gate. It's 10 foot wildlife fence above ground, two feet below ground. Very, very important to the integrity of the airport, and I don't know how long it was open. Deer are the main concern. I think with this type of development closer to the gate, you would think that that would help us in the security of that area. And I don't think there's any discussion of that road not staying open, if I understand correctly. So that, that, that would be a positive from our standpoint. Drainage is very important around the airport. We monitor it. I believe some of this ground will drain into airport drainage structures, which are largely terraced agricultural. And, and we're a bit sensitive to it. We ran into some issues with the ADNR and the EPA in, back in about 2013 or so, and so we want to just be careful. And I imagine whatever grading plans that you have will take that into consideration, but that's something, if it drains onto the airport property, we'd ask for that to be considered. Fence access I talked about, Mike already indicated it's an airport. We have noise, we have activity. We have a very active flight school. It's training for the industry through the UNO program at a very heavy rate. They'll probably train 9,000 hours this year, and they spend a lot of it going around in circles. We already have Hills of Cedar Creek, we already have Bent Tree Estates. Those are things that are there. This just gets a little closer, and it's a tough thing if somebody moves in and they then have a problem living next to an airport. Noise is a factor, not so much the small planes, but we do have, very proud of our commemorative Air Force Squadron Wing there. They have a P-51 and a T-6. I love those sounds, not everybody does. And when they come and go, people hear that. We also have jet aircraft. We have two jet aircraft based. One is a large jet airplane, could take off and fly nonstop to Europe. And it's got larger engines, performs very well, but you'll hear that. And we don't have restrictions of... And we don't have restrictions of hours when they can operate. So taking off and landing before sunrise or after sunset, that's a possibility. So that's where we just want to have compatible development, which just appears to be in that we have good neighbors and we are good neighbors in terms of helping them know before they move in. And my last comment was, to the extent that the airport might be a party to any covenants, I don't know if that's appropriate. I don't know if that'd be a, something that would be considered. But it might help us to have a, to keep from having a problem later in terms of just making sure that these things are taken into consideration. The drone comment, we've already got that. We're living with it. It's a challenge, but that's the new reality. So, so far, so good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the boards? All right, everyone. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much.
Rick, Matt's staff recommendation?
Our recommendation is to, the planning commission would be to approve the subdivision plating of this subdivisions. It does again fall in line with some of the changes that we made to where this road kind of splits the quarter-quarter section. So you get the benefit still of the four lots on each side of subdivision. It's an area where we already have some clustered housing in there, and it will kind of be right in uniform with what is available there.
Okay.
Question.
Yeah.
Do we have the authority to approve this? What's subject to a covenant that both parties can agree to?
I don't know that we would necessarily want to get involved in the legalities of a covenant. Because before the commission would want to approve any kind of covenant, then I think you would probably want to run it through to have a county attorney review it. And it would probably open up a whole new set of parameters that, whether or not.
Just a question.
In all reality, does there even need to be a covenant for the airport? Because they have to, inside the county, they have to have a permit to build. And they come down to your office to get a permit, and you already have the regulations in that we put in back when I was on this thing. Decades ago, it seems like. We already have that in there that they cannot build so high near the airport. Do they even need a covenants on that? I mean, they're gonna settle down as soon as they apply for a permit.
We, since, since the commission recommended the airport hazard zone into the zoning ordinance, that was back when it was just a zoning inspection. They didn't check height. All we did was check setbacks to make sure that.
But it was there.
But it was there, yes. And that, and it was a one level of enforcement. I feel like now with the county's addition in two thousand and seven of the building codes, every piece of the structure is inspected. And so the enforcement is there that the airport needs to maintain that integrity of what they have. I think, you know, to have in the covenants a mechanism just to notify the airport authority that, hey, we are, a building permit is gonna be issued, and this is what we are constructed to kind of run it through there as good neighborly. It would be something that we've probably seen before in other areas to where they've, they've done those kind of things. But no, I believe the, unless a new, you know, a new study was conducted or whatever, I think the regulations that we have in place are fairly stringent enough.
Yeah, question?
Just a quick comment if I could, please. Most of the things that we might look for in the covenants are probably common sense. It's an airport, noise activity and so forth. So it's probably not a high level. One example that I didn't mention is that wildlife fence. There, in talking with Mike, there's some of the property that will come up in about the wildlife fence and some of it that there'll be a separation. So we just want to think about from the airport's perspective, we always need access around that fence. It's four and a half miles long, and we maintain it both inside the fence and outside the fence. So to the extent that, and we believe it's just inside the property line, but to the extent that someone put up a privacy fence and drew it up to the wildlife fence and limited our access, well, that would be a problem. And that I suppose we would do it at the time. But to the extent that that was addressed upfront in a covenants would be helpful. So that's just an example.
Okay. And it's things like, we were involved in, I believe they called it the J-LUS study, which was part of the effort to make sure that OPIT maintained its abilities, you know, and there's, when these grading plans and things like that come through, it's like you said, you know, it is kind of a sensitive area because you don't want to establish any kind of wetlands that might attract birds and those kind of deals. So I feel like we'll, we'll be fairly sensitive watching that as well when those plans come through.
I do think it's probably smart of the, on the developers and with the buyers of these properties to have covenants and spell things out just to keep it from coming back here, since we don't really, that's not really our.
I just want the buyer to be aware.
It's probably a good idea, but I don't know that as, as a group here that we can really.
And you would be amazed, I mean, there's people that go and buy houses, you use a quarry in Potawatomi County. There's people that will go buy a piece of ground and they will build right next to the quarry. They'll build a, they'll build their house next to the quarry, and then they'll start calling our office saying, you know, they're using dynamite out here.
Yeah.
Things like.
No way.
You did build your house next to a quarry that has been established since the nineteen thirties. And it's kind of the same, you know, again, too with farm ground and things. Next thing you know, they're like, well, the cows in the back, they're coming right into the fence and they smell and.
And they move at night.
And we do our best. You can't save, I was told once, you can't save them all, but we do our best, right?
Right.
It just makes sense, I think, for you to disclose too much, over disclose.
Well, definitely.
Yeah.
And also, if that property puts up to the fence around the airport, I don't know how easement would be applied. But the, but the homeowner should know that you have to have access to the property that you maintain.
Go ahead, Mike.
If I could answer that, the property, the wildlife fence that Mr. Bill was referring to is actually setback inside of the airport property. So none of these properties actually above that fence. I think as close as it gets, as I've been dealt, was about ten feet away. And in some places, it's a hundred feet away. It follows the contours of the terrace. But, but I, I think, and we can put in the covenants that at least make sure that access through the airport transfer maintenance is not cut off.
I move to. Oh, wait. I move to closing. That's right. I have one more question. Oh, go ahead. What's the, what's the lot size, approximate lot size on these, Mike? The approximate lot size? It said on there.
I'm sorry, from three point nine acres is the smallest. The two big lots on the north are over eight acres, close to nine acres. Lot one's two four, nine, four acres, four point two, four point eight.
Okay. Yeah, it's just the prints are real small here. I didn't know how big they were, but, okay, that's fine. My last question. Okay, so Rick, you had a motion?
I move to close public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Okay. Any further discussion?
I think we should approve it and move on.
I move to approve. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. And that is for case sub number two oh one nine dash oh seven. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay.
Move to open the, it's probably being on case two thousand nineteen oh eight. A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, I ask the applicant to come forward, please. Must be it.
Hopefully it's to be.
You're the last one?
Not as complicated as the last one.
Okay, good.
John Jordensen, civil engineer for HCM Associates, six forty-fifth Avenue, here in Councils, obviously. I did bring a big plot, but it's a, basically a twenty-six acre parcel just directly east of Crescent on the west side of Two Hundred and Fifth Street. It's, so it's a twenty-six acres, looking to divide it into two parcels. In addition, dedicating thirty-three feet right away for Two Hundred and Fifth Street. There's an existing house on the south lot with a couple outbuildings. We intend just to leave that and then also build a residence on the north lot. It's currently A four, gonna stay A four zoning. Says gonna stay residential, but individual wells and septic. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Are they gonna continue to run the winning hog unit? Who'll revise it, or are they gonna make sure that that's not possible, or?
I do not know the answer to that.
I'd be sarcastic.
Okay. Any other questions? It hasn't been used for a while. I have to say, I mean, I was turning the page. All right. Just no further questions? Thank you. Do we have anybody else in favor? Doesn't look like it. Anybody opposed? All right. Matt, what is the staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation is to approve subdividing of the staffs. This was actually made possible just to make the planning commission aware. Two Hundred and Fifth Street, I believe, was extended out as official by Two Minus Road two years ago. When they made that, when they made the addition and they kind of ran their loop all the way around. It used to turn right there and head back towards Crescent. It was gravel going up north, back, connected back into L thirty-four two years ago. They went in there and they seal coded that all the way up around to the L thirty-four, kind of made a nice loop with that. So that is kind of one of the drivers behind this. And Two Hundred and Fifth Street is one of the roads that does cut through a middle, the middle of a lot of quarter-quarter sections. And so again, you get that benefit now on both sides of the road. But, so it falls in line with kind of where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
I move to close public hearing.
A motion, do we have a second? A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move that we approve case number sub dash two thousand nineteen dash oh eight.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
We have no other. We have no other business for the commission tonight.
I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.